Okay, we have a public hearing to come up on the adoption of a pension ordinance. But prior to that, over the last few weeks, we've had a couple of our athletic teams, in addition to other ones, too. We can't, you know, obviously, we had very good success with indoor track and swimming and so forth like that. But over the last couple of weeks, our boys' basketball team and our cheerleading squad have won the ECC championships. The comment that we talked about, the cooperation between Waterford and East Lime for the pump-out boat. But last night, we saw some really good sportsmanship. And I was in a meeting today, and I had a bet with the first selectmen in Waterford. And this morning, in our Zoom meeting, he was forced to sit there in the Zoom meeting wearing a Viking hat, okay? Thank you. I'm just very grateful I didn't have to wear a Waterford hat this morning. With the cheerleading squad, when I went to the event in Waterford about 10 days or a couple of weeks ago, just to watch the precision, there's no question that you're definitely an athletic event in a sport. Hannah, you've done a great job preparing your squad, and just to watch them, they wanted a grand champion, but there really was no one even a close second. It was just such an honor to watch you participate. Did a great job. And last night, the boys' basketball team up at the Mohegan Sun, it was a great environment to watch them have such a convincing victory over Waterford. And over the last few months, I've gotten to attend all the home games for basketball. Even worked the clock on a couple of occasions. It's amazing how you can have that enthusiasm because your coach is so reserved and quiet and, you know, just never moves around the floor at all. In fact, when I've worked the game clock a couple of times, I have to do this because I can't see around him because he keeps moving up and down. But a great performance last night. In fact, Coach, when you were playing Southington, you had two seconds left and a half, you inbounded it, and the coach was yelling at me for being slow on starting the clock, but it didn't make any difference because Mr. Mendel missed a shot anyway, so. But on behalf of the Board of Selectmen in the town, thank you for what you've done to bring such a sense of pride to East Lime. Coach, if you'd like to introduce the players that you have with you, that would be.
Why don't they come right up?
No, I was gonna have them come up. Come on up and introduce them right in front of us and face the camera. Yes, please, your trophy.
All right, so these are your 2021, '22 ECC champions. It's the first time since 2003 that East Lime has won the ECC championship. So this is an incredible achievement and incredible honor for these young men. These are our starting five. So we have Owen Elmer, he's a junior, Rowan Mendel, one of our senior captains, Riley Walsh, tournament MVP, senior captain, Gavin O'Brien, all tournament team, junior, and Will Englund, another senior captain who made the all tournament team. So you're a coach to these gentlemen, and as you saw in all the interviews, those teams really like a brotherhood, and I see them all as dead brothers as well, so it's an honor.
Thank you. Who do you draw in the state?
We have Classical Magnet in the first round. If we advance, we'll be played.
Are you home?
The question is, is home.
Excellent. Okay, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Good luck.
Thank you. Hannah, if you'd like to bring up your squad and introduce them to us, that would be very nice.
So we brought our seniors and two of our juniors. So we have Kayla, who's captain, Kenzie, who's captain, Alana, who's a junior, she's captain, and then we have Hannah, who's a senior, Nina, who's a senior, Ally, who's a senior, and Ashley, who's a junior. And we haven't won ECC since 2017, and we have states on Saturday, but we haven't won since '96, so maybe there's a cross that will have good outcomes.
All right, thank you, Hannah.
Good luck.
Thank you. All right, Ashley, thanks. I think your mother put you up to that probably, but anyway. So as you heard, next Saturday for the chili squad, and then Tuesday night for the boys' basketball team at home, so I'm sure I'll be there for that. Anyway, again, thank you so much. We're gonna continue with our meeting now, which I know you don't want to be at, plus, Hannah, you've got practice, right?
Yeah, we got practice.
Okay. Coach, thank you so much. Guys, thank you, too.
Good luck, everyone.
Yep, thank you so much. You're right.
Bye.
Notice is hereby given, I'll read the call to the, I'll let you do, no, you're busy, so I'll do that. Notice hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the East Lime Board of Selectmen on March 2, 2022, at the East Lime Town Hall at 108 Pennsylvania Avenue. Niantic, to begin immediately following a special town meeting, which will commence at 7:00 PM. To receive comments regarding the ordinance to establish a pension board, which I will not read. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the ordinance? Once again, anyone that would like to speak to the ordinance? Okay, hearing done, I'll take a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion to adjourn.
This is moved, is there a second? Seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it carries unanimously. We'll be revisiting this shortly. Now, we'll move on to our regular meeting, the call of meeting to order. We've already had the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any additional agenda or consent calendar items? None? Okay, delegations, anyone wish to address the Board of Selectmen? Anyone wish? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, move to approve the special budget meeting minutes of February 15, 2022, as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Aunt Chalow. Any further comments or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
And move to approve the special budget meeting minutes of February 16, 2022, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, Anne. Any comments, corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carries unanimously. We got regular minutes, Sandy?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take care of that. Moving on, think of the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of March 2, 2022, in the amount of $441.53.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded, any comments or correction, or any, no, it's consent, so I don't take questions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, that carries unanimously. Moving on, we have our first item, which will be the Waterford lockup. Anna, do you want to speak to this? All right, I can lead into it. Basically, we budgeted just a couple of months for the, for us to be in, sorry, I'm trying to go through my thing here. It's $8,658 a month, correct, Anna?
Actually, it's half of that.
Half of that? Okay, so we, that, so we wound up in the, needing the Waterford services a lot longer than we thought. We finally, as of yesterday, were able to start housing prisoners and no longer needed the Waterford lockup facility, so we ended our contract with them. But we do owe some money. Right now, it's $36,192, so we need some additional funding from contingency in the amount of $27,534. Anna, anything to add to that?
You've got it covered.
Okay. We'll put a motion, don't take any questions.
Move to approve a special appropriation and transfer in the amount of $27,534 from account 01-01-120-200-500 (contingency) to account number 01-25-216-200-201 (facility rental) and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, any questions for Anna or myself?
Yes, have all of our materials, files, and things been removed from Waterford at this point?
All our mater, well, we didn't have any files there, anyway. We always maintain our own files, but to my knowledge, everything has been removed from Waterford. We've been doing that over the last couple of weeks. The only holdup was getting the official CO to house the prisoners. Any further questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And it carries unanimously. Moving on, our next item is from the Niantic Fire Department, requesting additional funds to, for overtime for the full-time firefighters. As you can see, the action was we need to transfer approximately $38,000 to cover the remainder of the year. Anna, do you have anything to add for it, and then we could ask for input from Chief Barone?
I have some feedback.
Okay. And here again, we had, as you can see, it's fairly specific as to what the needs are for regarding that. Any, if you'd like to put out a motion, I mean, and then we'll move on.
Sure, move to approve a special appropriation and transfer in the amount of $38,000 from account 01-01-120-200-500 (contingency) to account 01-25-217-100-614 overtime Niantic Fire Department and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, that carries unanimously. The next one is, you can see, is just the agreement that is done every year. It will authorize me to enter into an agreement with the Lions Club so that they can have their July 2 and July 3 art show, and it used to be the Lobster Fest, it's not anymore. They just, you know, serve, they have people come in and prepare food and so forth like that.
Move to approve and to authorize the first selectmen to enter into a lease agreement with the Niantic Lions Club for the purpose of selling food in connection with the art show on July 2 and July 3, 2022. The town grants to the Lions for the period of 4:00 PM on Friday, July 1, through 10:00 PM on Sunday, July 3, the right to use the land at the Town Hall on Pennsylvania Avenue, which is to be set aside for that purpose by the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, and we look forward to this every year, and this past year, fortunately, we have it last year and this year as well, so any comments?
Yes, silly question, but number seven of that contract says no music. Why?
It's just, it's just that this is not, is not meant for, it's just, I mean, if someone's gonna play like some quiet music or in their thing, but this is an event for people, it's a, an art show, not some type of place for entertainment, that's all. And that's at the request of the Lions Club.
Is that just saying that none of the booths can be music booths, or?
No, it's dancing.
And no, this, this, this means you're basically not gonna have any bands playing. I mean, if someone's gonna, because there's a couple of times you'll see someone playing a small guitar or something like that, and that's not what they're talking about, it's just not setting up, you know, type bands and so forth.
Just caught my eye, that's all, sorry.
I had a couple, I mean, I had a couple of suggested language changes, but, well, one thing is, I think in paragraph four, that should be July 4, 2022, I think that's just the standard.
Okay, we'll make that, obviously.
But otherwise, just a couple of thoughts, I was just thinking it would be probably a good idea to specify some insurance limits in number six, rather than just have a general, a general clause in there. Typically, you will see that.
This is run through, this has already been run through town attorney, though.
Oh, it has?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, this is, yeah.
Okay, because I, you know, that and a couple of other suggestions I had, but that and some language, some language suggestions, give me a contract and I'll kind of start editing it, sorry.
Go ahead, you have.
Yeah, that's okay, but maybe we can just convey a couple of those things. But I, I would suggest that, just to be clear on that, because it's, it's open-ended.
Okay, we could table this and go for, I'll resubmit it to town attorney for clarification.
Is anyone else, you know, looking for that, or is it just?
I was just reading, I mean, it says the Lions agree to furnish evidence of sufficient insurance against personal injury and property damage.
Right.
So what I think is that when they contact the insurance company, the insurance company is gonna tell them what's required, you know what I mean?
I guess, it just seems to be, it seemed open-ended to me, and it would, you know, typically, there's a reference to at least, you know, so much, you know, so much liability for property, so much for personal injury, some limits.
I would suggest, rather than tabling it, since this is to give you permission to negotiate the contract, right?
No, basically, enter into this contract with them.
Okay, so we can't give you the action to verify that the dollar amount is X, Y, or Z?
I can, you could ask, I could just ensure we have adequate coverage for this, I mean, that.
They do, right.
Because, I mean, line eight says that it's insured by the Lions International, so I'm assuming that that's gonna have more than a $50,000.
No, I would quite imagine so.
I mean, you could, you could add something like, the Lions agree to furnish evidence of sufficient insurance as determined by the Lions International Insurance, you know, I mean, that's basically, the insurance company is sets what it should be, you know, to make sure that the town is covered.
I, I agree that the insurance company would set, but it just seems to me that more typically, you see it spelled out in some, some format, there's some reference to something that gives you the limits, you know, a little bit of clarity.
Can we rely on past precedent and say that this has worked for the last 10 years? Without a problem?
Just a, just a.
And modify it next year if that's the need?
Well, maybe the question is, you know, in the past five years, what was the amount of the insurance?
Yeah.
Well, this is basically what we've used for the last, forever, so.
I mean, if town attorney is comfortable with that, then, you know, so be it. I thought I was looking at more of a draft, to be honest, so. It's, if he's comfortable with that, the more generic language, then that's, that's okay. Just a stylistic difference, I guess.
Okay, well, any other comments? Okay, we've made the change to 2022, and I will find out the limits of coverage, I can easily do that. And here again, I can find that out, and if it's not sufficient, I won't sign it.
Yeah, it can even be attached to the agreement, you know, just for clarity.
Okay.
To keep it, even if you don't change the language, you could attach it, initial it as part of the agreement.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion as amended, signify, with the date changed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it carries unanimously. We have one, an individual, Michael Strube, who lives 13 Bayview, who's been interested in getting on the ZBA as an alternate. He's been a resident of Crescent Beach area, Crescent Point, as you can see, Bayview Avenue for well over a couple of decades. He's been involved with that community, would like to serve on it, and he's an unaffiliate as far as his voter registration, so.
Yeah, so we'll move to a point, Michael Strube, 13 Bayview Avenue, Niantic, as an alternate member on the zoning board of appeals for the town of East Lime with a term to expire on January 8, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions on that?
Just, just a point, I wanna make sure we have the correct spelling of Mr. Strube's name, it's spelled two different ways.
It is, okay.
So has it got the R or not?
It does have the R. Oh, right down the bottom, okay.
Put a C.
Good job. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it carries unanimously. Moving on to the formation of a pension committee, we've discussed this at a previous couple of meetings, and we have the public hearing tonight, which we are required to do before that. And just so, you know, those that are just tuning for the first time will find out, there's a commission of, what this will establish, five individuals who will oversee the state's pension fund to ensure that it's managed properly and that the investments are done, and they have a fiduciary that they will deal with, and it also does make this an official committee. In the past, this has been, Paul Formica established this back, I believe, 2008, between 2008 and 10, and it was just basically to manage or look after the town's assets and investments with their pension fund. It has grown from over $7 million to about $33 million, and most pension funds are funded at anywhere from 73% to 78%. We're funded a little over 100%, so we're in good shape. And it requires, most of these people all have backgrounds as fiducians, either in insurance companies or, or investment firms, and there's one member we're looking for from a town union, so that person needs to be, we still need a member there. Dave Conley from the Fire Department used to be on that, but he's since retired and it hasn't been filled yet. So that's pretty much it, and we've discussed this in the past, so.
So move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Establishing a Pension Board in the form presented at a meeting of the Board of Selectmen on February 2, 2022. The effective date of the ordinance will be 10 days after publication of the notice of its adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan, any other further comments on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, and it carries unanimously. Moving on, now we're gonna continue our review of the town budget and deliberations and hopefully adoption of the budget tonight. Do we want to pick up where we left off? Do we want to go back?
We could pick up, I'd like to pick up.
Okay, and we stopped on? Do you have a, we stopped off?
You know, that's, that was a question I had.
We were on the police.
We were, yes, and then did we stop there, and then were we at Niantic Fire Department?
I don't think we had, we were, we.
We hadn't begun that?
Yeah, why don't you go?
Yeah, we can do the signature while we're waiting.
No.
Just trying to make that strong. Yeah, because I, sometimes I remember stopping at that point, and my notes, I think I.
Okay, we had covered the police?
Yeah. Yeah, then I think we are, there, 217.
Yep, I thought we were getting ready to move on to Niantic Fire Department, too, Okay, moving on to the Fire Department, Chief Barone is here as well, so if there's some questions that we have coming up, we can ask him, too. Right now, there is an additional firefighter in the budget. Right now, they have five at Niantic, this would take it up to six, correct, Chief? Okay, thank you. And you see the line for part-time firefighters and overtime, and I think the overtime is adjusted, so it would bring it more in line with what we had to do tonight as far as bringing up the, fully funded for the year. And longevity is obviously just something that we're required to do, we have to fulfill that. Any questions or comments on the Niantic Fire Department budget?
I just have one.
Go ahead.
Well, Chief is here, I did have a question about whether the, your need for the extra firefighter or firefighters is, you know, sort of born out of COVID, you know, and the COVID issues, or something more with your scheduling and, yeah, you can come on up and.
Yeah, Chris, come up, Jim, to the podium.
Thank you.
It's, it's not from that, we learned a lot of things from COVID, but it's not that. If you keep building four or 500 apartments a year in town, you need people. And the best I can say is, our volunteer forces have, have fallen off, especially during the day. We're not a town like Seabrook, where their demographics, they have five, six people, they have no paid personnel, but they can leave their jobs, and they go, and they get a truck, and they handle the call. That's not true in East Lime anymore. I don't work downtown anymore. We used to have, you know, somebody at the lumberyard, there was a gas station, everybody could leave and go. We don't have that anymore. And the volume of calls with all the building in town demands that you service all these things.
Yeah, but that's helpful, thanks, because I think when, when you initially presented your budget, it was sort of a combo with Flanders Fire Department, and I feel like some of this information wasn't articulated.
We, we talked together and, and we worked together, and, and Chris and I talked two, three times a week as to what's going on and what direction we're going. There was a meeting last night of the Ambulance Association, we spoke again about different things and different plans and different ideas as, as to where we're going. This adding one person at this point is just really minimal, minimal.
Any other questions? Anne, please.
Yeah, so just, you were saying before, you used to have more volunteers, was there a way that you attracted volunteers before, that is it occurring now, or is there, do you know, like?
Over the past two years, definitely, the COVID thing has not helped any of that thing. People are busy with, everybody works two jobs, so do you try to attract them? Yeah, we got two or three, most of the people in the Fire Department came up, you know, joined when they were 15, 16, 17 years old, it was a different way of life, and you had time to do this and to, and to learn and to contribute to the organization. Now, it's just, you know, everybody's on their phone and going to school and so forth, it's not there anymore.
Plus, Chief, the training that's involved compared to?
Yeah, yeah, and I don't, I don't like when, when somebody says about training, you, you gotta be trained, you don't want somebody coming in your house not knowing what they're doing.
And it's, it's a national trend with, with volunteer fire departments.
Yes.
I mean, it's, it's nothing.
I think, I think, you know, I'd originally asked for two, and, and Chris Taylor and I talked about it, and, and, you know, it doesn't just benefit down here in us, it benefits both ends of town, so, yes, it's in my budget, but it's a benefit to the entire town because it's providing another person, it's providing more manpower to be initially there. We, we're at the minimum, quite frankly, we're at the minimum for what we do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So we've talked in the past about the inability to find the volunteer firemen when I'm in the Board of Finance, and I know that both departments have tried and not successfully pre-pandemic, so I understand your, your challenges. Hopefully, though, that, that will shift, and hopefully, people will start being more available.
Oh, I, it'd be nice for that to happen, I mean, we spent a lot of time with one guy, he quit and went to work someplace else, just when he's ready to, you know, work on a part-time basis, you know, gone.
That's the other challenge, is finding the people and keeping the people.
Exactly, yeah.
But the overtime and part-time hours now with your budget are based on your current staffing level?
Correct. Uh, no, I believe the overtime is increased to show that, that additional hire because he's, there's another five hours a week overtime by the, by the present contract that the firefighters have.
Okay, the current contract, I don't think.
That's in place.
Yeah, that's in place.
And I think we used the figures that are in the current contract in place to come up with that additional overtime that's there.
So the current contract has a minimum number of hours of overtime?
Five hours a week.
Each firefighter, each paid firefighter gets five hours of. Each firefighter, each paid firefighter gets five hours of guaranteed overtime a week. And we're negotiating the contract right now. We just, I had a meet with, an informal meet with the firefighter union this afternoon. And we're going to set up something with the attorney, labor attorney, very soon, so.
Okay. But that's where my biggest struggle is, is adding a person and that increases overtime. Because I would think you add a person, it decreases overtime.
Yes. And then that, well, on the other end of that is, you know, that five hours a week, that's in their contract. The other end is, what hours do you work after that? Because we're asking for this other money because we've had some part-time issues where guys have not been able to work because of their other jobs and/or they've been sick. So we've had full-timers come in and that, you have to pay them the overtime rate for those night shifts to cover because you don't really want to leave those open.
But your budget increases the part-time costs as well?
Yes.
But this is based on the fact that, is this based on the fact that you wanted two full-time firefighters? Or is this based on the fact that you suspected you would only get one?
We asked for two.
Yes.
Expecting to get one.
Do these figures represent...
Pardon?
Do these figures represent what they would have been had you gotten the two?
No.
Okay.
No. No. When one was cut, they were adjusted, yeah.
Any other questions for the chief?
Yes. How long generally does it take for a firefighter to be trained and you feel confident that the person could do the job?
Well, the state, you know, there's state classes. We, through the department, set a minimum of you have to be a firefighter one. Specifically, when a person comes in, they are trained to operate our equipment, to know what our procedures are for responding to various calls. So it could take a couple of months, depending on how fast the person retains it. I mean, the people that work there now came up through the department. So they were aware of procedures, they were aware of, and now it's a matter of maintaining various certifications and so forth, like EMT and that type of thing. But it depends on what the person, what the person's history is with our department and what he got through the state. Firefighter one's an absolute minimum. And then there's various stages that you can go all the way up, fire officer, instructor, you can go all the way through these things.
And is this...
Just makes a person more aware of what's going on.
So my question, is the training done by existing officers and then they take some kind of a test, a proficiency test? Or does training take place, does this training take place off-site?
Yeah. If you go to the state classes, that's off-site. If you want to put a person through the academy, and I don't know what the cost is right now, you can send them to the Fire Academy up in Windsor Locks. And they can spend so many weeks up there and get basics. Or any other class that you want to go to up there. But there's a major cost to that.
So does the town pay for that? Or the individual pays?
If that person wants to, if that person is hired, there's no policy right now. Anybody can ask to go to a class to enhance something that they already do and enhance the program here. Yeah.
Thank you.
The average class is about, I don't know, I want to say 11, $1,100 now, an average class. That's nothing exotic, nothing, but it gives you a certification saying that you know all the basics.
Well, I'd just like you to know that you still owe me about 15 hours of class time when you ran out of class.
Yeah, I know. I was scared.
I haven't forgotten.
I think, I think you've, your service to the town, I think is made back for that, Chief.
I did have one other question.
Sure.
Where's your, do you have advertising in your budget somewhere?
No, I don't.
To try to recruit veterans?
No.
I mean, volunteers?
Most of it, most of it comes from, we've had posted signs. We had, actually, I'll tell you this story. This was a gentleman and his wife and his two kids came in the station a couple of weeks ago and they brought a bunch of cases of soda and a bunch of boxes of potato chips. And they said, geez, we watched from our house that fire on Flanders Road. And I said, oh, wow. I said, what's all this? He says, no, we want you guys to have, it had to be a couple hundred dollars worth of stuff there, between cases of soda and everything. And they dropped, no, you guys have this. And we got a long conversation there and the kids were looking at fire trucks and, well, maybe you better get an application and join here. He said, okay. So, I mean, a lot of...
It seems like you need, you need to...
A lot of your best members come that way. A lot of the best members that came through the department came that way. They saw something happen and they had an interest in it and it generated from there.
Well, we've tried, I mean, you've had the sign across, up by East Pat, across the road, looking for volunteers.
I thought there used to be an advertising budget in here. Maybe it was just covered under training or something.
No. At one, at one time, one of the state groups, I don't even think they asked for money. I don't remember paying for anything. They advertised as a group throughout the state for all fire departments, which was a good thing.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to Flanders Fire Department.
What number is that?
So one right after 220.
18.
218, I'm sorry. 218, as we can see, that's just up a little bit. A few thousand dollars for firefighters and a little bit for overtime. Same thing, that they're feeling up there as well, you know, the need to cover. And, you know, going back to the volunteers, there was a time, and Pete and PJ, you remember when, I became a member of Flanders when I moved to town in 1984. And it was just when you hear the tone, go to the fire. And that was it. The training now basically involves, as if it's a part-time job. I mean, there has to be some dedicated time. And a lot of people, you know, in schedules, they just don't have it. And I think that's one thing that is been a contributing factor.
Well, I understand. Like I said, we've been having this conversation for...
For a long time.
Many, many years. And I just wonder if, I mean, it's hard to find those people, but it's not impossible to find those people. So I'm wondering if we should add some advertising budget to these two budgets, whether it's just, you know, 500 or a thousand dollars, just enough, so they can put an ad in the paper once in a while, go to the school, drop something off, you know, try to get those young, older teenager people to get involved. So I just, I just think it's a good investment in the future to get those younger people engaged earlier, not to mention this cost effect if they're free.
That's a good point. Because now that you mention it, I've seen in the past six or eight months, full-color ads in the paper from the London Fire Agency and others trying to recruit.
Well, the London's requiring full-time firefighters, not, not volunteer.
I'm just saying that they've got, they've got an advertising budget.
So that would be my only comment on these two budgets, is is there a way that we can try to get more people interested or aware of volunteer budgets? And maybe it's not in these budgets, maybe it's through ARP funding, or maybe it's through some other thing.
I think Facebook is a great way to go. I mean...
I think we need to try to find a way to get more people interested in the fire department, volunteer people.
Well, you know, just thinking of what the high school did, or, you know, you've got kids who are not on college, the college track, who that might be the group that might be interested in joining the fire department, getting involved with the EMTs and, you know, kind of, and so it might be reasonable to go to the schools and, you know, talk to the, you know, the high school students.
Do you know if they still have the Fire Safety Week at the schools where the firemen come in? And it used to, they used to bring the trucks in. I don't know if...
In October.
I know, the week.
You know, the past couple of years, if it's called at any school, I suppose that could be, you know, revisited.
Jim, the, Chief, the police have the police cadets. Do you have, have you had anything in the past?
Junior auxiliary, which is a...
Flanders has it too.
And Flanders has it?
Yes.
I think it's 15 to, 15 to 18, but that became, there are still juniors, make no mistake, there's a couple. But I don't know, it goes back and forth. We heard insurance arguments, and they can't do this, and they can't do that. And, I mean, when I would got the fire department, we used to fight over who was going to get the air pack to win and put the fire out when we were 16 years old.
That's, yeah, you can't do that now.
No, now you got to kill the other guy and then take the air pack. It's, it's different insurance regulations has limited stuff. But yes, there are ways to, you know, get the kids...
Maybe get that program going again.
If they want to come down and be interested in that, it's, it's tough sometimes.
It's a smaller population, but it seems to me like it's that much harder to find them, so we have to try harder to find them.
Yeah. And I mean, it's, all these expenses and so forth are because we have a larger population, but nobody wants to do that.
Well, you know, yeah, exactly.
So I think that the return on investment, if we're going, I mean, if we were able to spend just a little bit of money, I don't know what a little bit means, and get one volunteer, two volunteer, to cut down the overtime hours and other things, I think it's, I think the return on investment would behoove us.
We actually have one in there for, I believe, Fire Prevention.
Yes, I think they had it in Flanders, too.
And that's where you have to purchase various posters and so forth.
Yeah, that's what I thought was in the training line, which is the Fire Prevention line.
That might not be it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So nothing in Flanders budget? Moving on to 224, Fire Marshal's budget. As you can see, at his request, doing code compliances and inspections and so forth like that. And here again, with these larger complexes coming up, Costco wasn't there years ago, and that's really not such a big one, because that's fairly recent. But we have several other, you know, with Rocky Neck Village, a lot of other items coming up that will require attention. So that's why we've increased that from 65,000 to 75,000. The phone lines, I thought we were, we can, he even said we can cut that back to 2110. So, so...
Okay.
So that's, you know, to start...
Our first cut.
Yeah. No, actually, yeah. Start too, so. But everything else here is, is so, is pretty well, he, you know, he explained that quite well. So any comments on the Fire Marshal's budget?
So do we need a motion to lower 201 down to 2110?
Well, we could do that right now, because we're going to go back and start doing some other stuff. But since we're right here now, let's go ahead and do that.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to decrease 300 operating expenses, 201 telephones, I should say, under Public Safety Fire Marshal 224, from the current 2418 down to 2110.
4218.
4218. Did I just say something different? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. We know what you meant, though. Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Who's the second? I'm sorry.
Ann.
Ann.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, really.
Moving on to the ACO. I will mention that the chief has just recently, recently reached out to me that the ACO would like us to consider boosting the part-time position up to a full-time position. I don't think we're going to be able to do that right now. We could revisit that, you know, at some other point in time, once a firm dollar figure. And I would have, we'd have to also coordinate that with Waterford as well. But, because we don't have the, Waterford doesn't have the expense of housing the animals anymore. That's all done in New London now at that newer facility they have. So we might come back and revisit that, but that would probably, you know, be later on down the line. It wouldn't affect our adoption of the budget tonight, just to bring that out, that there has been a request for that. Because if we brought that up to full-time, it would also affect benefits. So, and that was just over the last couple of days that that came to, came to be. Any other comments on the ACO budget? Okay. Moving on, 317, Public Works and Highway Sanitation.
I think Joe had mentioned about the tree warden position and sort of...
Yeah, that is...
Having it treated a little differently.
Yeah, that's incorporated right now in 211. Basically, his recommendation would be to make the tree warden part of the public work director's job description, which I'm not, I don't have a problem with that, because now we have someone, and with the foreman who's in there too, he's, he's the deputy tree warden. So this way, we pretty much always have somebody working that can check this out. And I think it has worked out a lot better as far as getting trees done. We have somebody out there coordinating the cooperation with EverSource on a regular basis. When we've contracted out for tree wardens, most of the time, if they can, they'll look around. But most of the time, it's been responding to calls. This way, has someone out there. So I have no problem moving that up and keeping that there. Moving down, you know, for regular payroll, he's explained where that is, you know, as far as the money, why that reduced because one person, the general foreman is now no longer in the regular payroll for highway. Same reason why there was a little bit of reduction in the storm overtime. Highway longevity, Roseanne, you're going to like to hear this, because this, Bobby Schultz officially turned in his retirement letter yesterday. So after 46 years, has indicated he's ready to retire, or 48, or a lot of years. So, but it's a very nice letter, and so there'll be some savings there. And you can see most of the stuff for road reconstruction, repair, road signs, street signs, the SCAR tipping fee.
Well, pretty soon, all my former students are going to be retired. Maybe I'll have to fully retire.
I don't ever see that happening, Roseanne. Any, any items on that that come out? The nice thing to point out is the streetlights. Next year, that'll be a huge drop-off because of the seven-year program that, you know, basically replacing all it, we own them all. That's supposed to save us a nice amount of money. Any comments on that?
Well, you know, on the streetlights, they, I think they also save money by taking over some of the maintenance.
Yeah, the repl, well, they still do a lot of the maintenance, but we, but we do some of the, some of the work we do that doesn't require us to have to utilize EverSource.
Yeah. They've done a nice job with that program.
Anything else on that before we move on to Commission on Aging? And we can see in that, that's just up one point. And the only increase she had was in, for the bus dri, there was an increase for the bus driver position because of requests. And that, there again, a little bit increase in telephone and internet, but she explained that as well. So that's up by a whole $3,842. Nothing on that?
Pretty small amount of money for the services that they provide.
To say the least.
Especially the stark areas that are in, I mean, it's just a cold kind of, the senior center just doesn't have a lot of comfort to it. I don't disagree, it's a small budget. I did the math six different ways. And for the number of people using it, it's $156 a person a year. It's like, but I don't want to give her things that she's not asking for, but I would encourage her to try to think of things that she would like to do to make that space more comfortable.
They are working on a master plan.
Well, they, one of the things they have, as Ann and Ann can tell, they have requested a, you know, feasibility study for the entire community center to see what can we do moving forward that, because it's... forward that, because it's 30-plus years old, it needs, the roof needs some work on it, so if we're gonna do something, let's make it more user-friendly.
Yeah, just talking about the senior center part of it itself, it's just kinda, it doesn't have a lot of comfort to it, it's just like.
It almost looks like an open room for something, something else, it's, it's not what you, yeah.
Yeah, like an auditorium or something, so.
Well, and in comparison with the fire department that we've just been talking about, a lot of their services are provi, are provided by volunteers, and they also have co-pays for the majority of the programs that they run.
If they can aff, here again, if they can't afford it, there's no problem either.
Grants and powerhouse accounts.
Yeah, powerhouse, yeah. Okay, nothing further on that, health and welfare, I mean, I mean, that's.
Do we have library, do we?
What?
Do we, library, Nate?
Did I skip my library?
Yeah, that's 420.
We're at 419.
419?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I've been the one making the mistakes, and maybe, maybe I didn't think it was.
I skipped health and welfare.
Yeah, okay, health and welfare, this is just VNA, obviously, that's just responding to, yeah.
Kevin.
Yes.
So I, with regards to the library, at the point in time that they were working on the budget.
Okay, just trying to make sure we're done with VNA, though, we're on that now.
We're on 419, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're almost there, we're not moving on from that yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This has been a long.
I know, it's been a long day.
Long day, yeah, I started with a Zoom meeting at eight o'clock, which I'll bring you up today on with, with COVID updates from Ledge Light and so forth like that, and it's, it hasn't stopped, so, okay, anything for VNA for Southeastern Connecticut? Okay. Okay, moving on to Eastline Public Library, Anna, now we can let you talk.
Yeah, so I, I took another look at what they had put in the budget for the retirement, annual retirement contribution, and for the health insurance, and there's a $10,000 reduction that can be made in their budget relative to those two items, so I provided Lisa with the information, and she's aware of it, and she, you know, she's okay with the reduction, based on the information I provided.
So basically, instead of 1161, it'd be 1151?
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion to reduce the line, the budget for the, for Department 420, Culture and Recreation, 150, Community Services, 295, Eastline Public Library, from $1,161,695 to $1,151,695? Is there a motion to do that?
I'll move it.
No.
It's moved.
Well, seconded.
How do you say what it's like?
No, it's okay, it's, okay.
No, the, yeah.
10,000, if you wanted 10,000.
Yeah, so it's.
10,000 reduction.
Okay, moved and seconded, okay, any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're on a roll. And Bill, what you mentioned, the lease, the, the library is very much part of this, you know, feasibility study, how to make that better, so, rather, because I know there's been suggestions to do this here and that there, and I think there's, they want an overall, what can we do to enhance that facility?
Like I said, my, my opinion, that building just isn't laid out as efficiently as it should be.
Oh, no, I mean, that.
So before we start talking about more bricks and mortar, it seems like.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Well, that's what the feasibility.
Yeah, that, that's what the feasibility study is gonna do, yeah. Mr. Hardy was brand new on the Board of Selectmen, that was approved, weren't you?
I was on there two years before that.
Okay. Moving on to Parks and Rec, there's, it's, it's a very small increase, as we can see, there's a, under Director, there's a reduction because Dave will be retiring on September 9th, so it's anticipated, there's, there's gonna be like 40 hours where they both, one week where there's a turnover, but that, but everything else is pretty straightforward. Maintenance payroll, as you can see, that has to do with, because many of the seasonal people make minimum wage.
So is the incoming Director's salary going to be 93,000?
No, that will be the combined total for that, yeah, this is a little bit of Dave's and an estimate on what the wages will be for the incoming Parks and Rec Director. According to the town charter, they are hired by Parks and Rec, but they, they don't negotiate salary, that's done at our end, so. Any other comments on the Parks and Rec budget? Debt service, we, I mean, there's not much we can do on debt services, is there, Anna?
What can, what can we cut there?
Yeah, let's just, okay, what's, yeah, yeah, oh, no, no, I mailed it Friday, I promise, I mean, you know, type of thing, it is a four, you know, it is a nice reduction, it's a reduction of almost, a little over, on 91, about $91,000 reduction, so it's about a 4% decrease in our debt service. Anna, is there, has the high school come off yet? The high school addition come off the, have we paid that off?
I think we have, that's 20 years.
We approved it in 97, and construction started in 99, 90, no, it started in 97.
I think we bonded it for 20 years.
Yeah.
Right, but it all depends on the schedule of bonding, so you would initially start with short-term notes, and it depends on at what point in time the town did the permanent financing.
The permanent bond, too, because the same thing, that might be a good question, too, for the middle school, too, now, because that's, be 20 years old this fall.
Yeah, I can, I can make a note and check the schedule.
Does that make you feel really old? Because you were one of the, you were in sixth grade when you, when that opened, so.
Yeah.
Anna, you had some nice graphs of that when we were doing public safety building.
Yeah.
Which show the, you know, fair each, each for the next so many years, our debt obligation,
Okay, what does G O B stand for?
General Obligation Bond.
Thank you, just looked like gob to me.
Yeah, so, okay, so nothing further under there. Anna, do you want to talk capital tonight, regarding what's in, in the budget here? Not, not the capital improvement plan, but just the, you know, the capital outlays here.
So the first line item is the annual subsidy that the town puts into the CNRE fund, and you do have a worksheet that defines what the 115,000 is for, 4,000 for some CAD software and survey equipment for engineering, setting aside $10,300 for town roof projects, 15,500 for HVAC, any parts repairs that we may have to deal with, 25,000 for various town projects that may come up during the year, $5,000 set aside for town, townwide servers, 45,000 for revaluation, 8,500 for the Eastline Waterford boat, and then $2,000 for the defibrillators that we have for replacement parts, so that's what the 15, 115, 300 is. Then the next account is for townwide computer replacements, our IT manager has a list, and does, you know, the departments that come up, come up on the list. The item for engineering, that's a lease payment on the vehicle that we purchased for that department. Parks and Rec equipment is for acquisition plan payments, 39,123 are existing, and 17,020 is for the new truck that is proposed for next fiscal year. Niantic Fire, that is for turnout gear, their SCBA cylinders, assorted fire hose, and a thermal imaging camera. Flanders Fire, the funding there is for an acquisition payment on the chief's vehicle, some SCBA cylinder, cylinders, assorted fire hose, and turnout gear. Emergency Management, that's an acquisition payment, Fire Marshal is an acquisition payment, and Public Work Trucks, those are all acquisition payments, 329,328 are existing payments, and 99,991 are for the proposed items.
And that could be adjusted possibly by ARPA.
Right, so.
And that's one of the things, too, before we look at the Capital Improvement Plan for next year, we'll make sure that we get the report and what we move forward for, for items under the American Rescue Plan, so there are some items in there, too.
Right, so one of, one of the items in the current, in the proposed year, new financing, that 99,000 includes the trash truck, which is under consideration by the.
Right.
ARP Committee.
So, and how much would come out if that?
66,000.
So 66,000 would come out.
Yeah, the trucks.
And that's times five years.
Yeah, so that, that would be a significant amount, too, and as we've talked with police cruisers, we don't budget anything for that because of the stipend they charge when they work highway construction job, that has been now paying for our police cruisers.
It's worked out nice.
It has worked out really nice, it's just that we're gonna get rid of plate number 103, because that's the one that always winds up, because that vehicle was towed when it was hit, too, as you might, yeah, and here again, too, you know, you'll probably get, obviously, for, you know, insurance and that, you'll be able to replace it, but the thing is, the lead time, as Chief, with fire trucks, the garbage truck we ordered last year, we approved last year, haven't gotten yet, and Chief, you just, through a lot of hard work, got the fire truck that we approved last year at the cost that we approved, so, Chief and I talked a lot on that one, and he did a really lot of hard work to make sure we were able to meet it on the budget because of the increase in cost.
Quick question on the CNRE accounts, is the balance in the far right column after the, this year's?
It's the balance, the current balance of the accounts.
Okay, anything further on that? And Board of Ed, you know, we just got that tonight, so obviously, it's, what's showing in here, I believe, is the total, the approved total, because he said 4.59, and this is what Anna has reflected in.
You know what, I just want to point out, in the, the town projects, about 100, it's about 176,000 of that balance is the FEMA funds that we received last fiscal year, when we, we put it in that townwide project account, so there's some ideas on what specifically to, at some point, appropriate some of those funds for, I believe, one of them is.
Yeah, I, I, Dave Putnam and Bill Shearer are coming up with getting, are now getting the quote, so next, basically, at our first meeting in April, they'll have a proposal for using some of the money, the FEMA money, for crack ceiling on the boardwalk, which Dave has pointed out that his, his people have the ability to do it, but that, they're more of a, just for an emergency, we would contract people who, you know, are experts in it, with some type of a, possibly some type of a warranty, so we're waiting to get that back for about a month from now.
That's actually the line item I was looking at, because if we're gonna put $25,000 more into that account, what are we spending, and I was, so I was wondering if that account's starting to grow now more than it needs to, maybe that's somewhere we can tighten our belt a little bit.
All right.
And then, the, and one other thing, that appropriation that we did this evening, the 12,500.
Comes out of townwide projects.
Yeah, that came from that account.
Yeah. Okay, all right, now, go back to the beginning and start, if we'd like to make some adjustments to the, before we, areas where we make some adjustments, either to increase, decrease, or whatever, is there any item that, do you want to do this, going through the, start from the beginning, go to the back, is that the easiest way to do it again? Or do we want to have people bring up items that they, they would like to see adjustments made?
I think we've, we've just gone through, except for those that we weren't, like, the first election salary, we talked about that, but we needed to get more research, I'm getting an answer on that, I don't know if there's too many other open actions that we had.
We did it as we were going along.
Well, we, we had, okay, Bill, you did mention contingency, though, and Anna, we've done some work on that, and we could, Anna, did you want to cover?
Yeah, sure, I, but there's one other thing, so, in the Information Technology Department, which is 109, when the budget was submitted, the department had put in a salary increase, which really shouldn't be there, so I, you know, we should amend, amend that one.
Okay, which, which one would that be?
211?
No, 109.
109.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
211 or 109?
Department 109, account 211.
Yeah.
So the.
Database supervisor?
Yes.
So the 67,916 should remain 67,916?
Correct.
So.
So I make a motion to reduce Department 109 Information Technology, Section 100 Personal Services, line item 211, for the database supervisor, from the current 69,953 down to 67,916, pending final, whatever.
And Anna, you'll, can you tell us, I'll, we'll let Anna tell us what the new totals are for.
So the reduction is $2,037.
Right, so that would change to 175,7532.
It's changing it to what?
Bill, you're really, oh, you're really good at this, you just got the answer long before we do.
The answer's 423126.
423126, but we also have to change the number up where it says 175,753, that'll come down to 173-something or other.
173716.
173.
173716.
746.
Okay. So you want me to continue my motion to lower 69,953 to 67,916, and subsequent changes, lowering the Personal Services line item from 175,753 to 173,716, and the total budget from 425163 to 423126.
Okay, so moved by Bill, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction thick, carries unanimously. Anna, next item, since I know you've got some things there.
Adjustments.
Adjustments, that's, thank, that's a good word.
In refining some of the numbers that we were dealing with, we found that we would be able to make a reduction of $53,838.
And, and 120, 120 contingency.
The payroll contingency.
Yeah. Payroll contingency, so it'll go from 427 to, to.
Would you repeat that number?
120.
120.
Can, yeah.
So how much is that reducing?
53,838.
I think that we'll be able to realize some more, but that will, by the time we're able to realize that, it will be at the Board of Finance level.
162.
So what's the number?
16162?
373162. We dropped it, 53,838?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's 373162.
Correct.
And if I take the 602000 and subtract, that's 383. And if I take the 602000 and subtract that 383.
No changes in that.
548162. Okay. So I make a motion to lower Department 120 contingency, line item, or Personal Services 100, line item 500, Town Payroll pending change from 427000 to 373162, which changes the total contingency to 548162.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
A second.
Second, any further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay, that carries unanimously. Anna, any other adjustments?
Those are the answers that I have.
Oh, keep going, you're doing good.
The numbers are getting bigger, keep going. Okay, any other items that wish to be discussed?
I did want to finish the conversation about your selectmen salary.
Okay, since this involves one of us up here, I am going to turn the meeting over to Ann and recuse myself from discussion and voting, so. Huh?
Can I put your fingers in your?
Well, I can listen. And if you remember, Tom Hanks recommended I, and I'd be in the room because I, you know, I don't give eye signals.
So we'll come get you then, okay? Okay.
So I got the report from CCM.
Hang on, hang on, just a moment, because Kevin's still gathering himself today.
And as expected, the report from CCM has the executive for each town, whether it's a selectman or mayor, it's all over the place, right? There's, there's no consistent approach. So if I sort by total budget, you go somewhere like Danbury, North Stonington. Danbury's got a budget of $48,000, right? North Stoni- $48,000 a year. North Stonington, Derby, New Britain, all have a budget of $78,000 a year. New London's got a budget of $99,000 a year. The problem with this data is, I don't, I don't know if there's other things that go into these salaries. It may be that they're also the chairman of the EOC or something else, and they get some, something from that. So I fall back to a percentage of other department heads. If we were going to give the first selectman a raise, I think it would be driven by other department heads to see where he is relative to them. If I look at this database for towns that don't submit their budgets, East Slimes is one of, one of the ones that doesn't submit their budget to CCM. So I found that, that was kind of interesting as well. So. The other thing I wrestle with though, is, is what the right increase would be. And it seemed to me like 5% is not enough, 10% is too much. So is the answer somewhere in between?
Well, I think we also should look at what the intention was of the board originally in dealing with the first selectman's salary. And if we look at that and think of, you know, at, at this point, this was the year it was supposed to be up to 132, and it's at like 102.
So my challenge with that is, if I look at, right now, saying that we're going to raise it 8% a year for the next four years, we don't know what we're going to have for challenges next year.
That's correct.
And we definitely don't know two years from now, when there's new board members, what the challenges are going to be there. So I understand what you're saying, is that years ago, somebody, the board members, decided that they wanted $130,000 salary, but that's what that board wanted then. That's not necessarily what this board wants now.
But it was to, it was to have been done with gradual increases, and my point was that if the salary is for the position, and that the previous first selectman deciding to take less money than what had been voted on by the board, I think kind of, it doesn't sit right with me. But on taking that into consideration, I think we go for what we think is reasonable this year, and then if we want to have to deal with it every year after that, we do.
So I take exception to the fact that the pay is for the position, because if we get a new director of public works, they're not going to get paid the same as the current director. If we get a new Parks and Rec director, he's not going to get paid the same, right? When we bring new department heads in, we expect to have a little bit of a step back. And then if you're in the role for years and years and years, you're going to get more and more and more. So the logic of saying a new first selectman maybe doesn't get paid as much as a guy that's been here, a gal that's been here for 10 years, 20 years, that, that makes sense to me.
Well, I think the difference too is, you're talking about appointed positions versus an elected position.
Right, and I would think the elected position is less likely to have the competency of somebody that's been here for 20 years. So I think that's why a lot of towns, people that come into a first selectman position are probably not people that are 45 years old looking to grow their career. They're probably people towards the end of their career that are looking to get involved in the public, you know, kind of position, especially since you're taking, you're risking two years of salary, right? I mean, you know you're going to get a salary for two years, no idea what's going to happen in 30 years. So it's, it's a risky position, but I don't think we want to try to make it appealing to somebody that wants to take risks either. So I struggle with the whole thing, I struggle with coming up with what I would suggest to be the right number. I know that the first selectman has reviewed this budget, and he's okay with the way it is now. I know that our budget is very tight, and we're trying to cut corners everywhere. So I struggle putting more money into the budget, any, any line item, whether or not it's somebody. So I'm, I'm babbling now because I really don't know where to go from here. I don't think that it's, it's justified a large, a large increase, given all the other challenges. I know that our first selectman says that he doesn't want this year to increase his salary because of all the other challenges, he doesn't think it's appropriate. But I also understand that we need to set our, set up, set ourselves up for the future, and we have to make it so that we can't only bring in people that are retired from a Fortune 500 company, and they can do this just as a hobby. So.
Well, we, we, the thing is, we have to make the decision now at the budget time, as opposed to when other contracts are being negotiated. Perhaps the first selectman's salary should go with the same percentage that is negotiated by the unions. Whatever they get, the first selectman gets that percentage. I have a problem with as low as it is, this is very low.
Yes. It's, if you compare it to any other job on the planet, it's, you know, it's not what you'd expect for somebody managing an $84 million budget.
And of course, we can't compare the first selectman's salary with the superintendent of schools, but the first selectman's responsible for the entire town.
Yeah. So I fully agree that it's under where it should be.
I think that most people who, one of the first selectmen are people who are, you know, at the end of their career, want to do something else, get back to the town. I think that if you want to increase the salary, it should be, maybe you say, okay, it's, you know, not a percentage, but, you know, let's say you say $5,000 a year over the next, you know, five years or something, and that way you work toward it. But I, I think it's got to be gradual, I mean, I don't think we should just say, okay, it's going from, you know, 102 to 130,000.
I agree.
You know?
I agree.
But there's got to be both, right? We've got to get back into the equity, and we need the cost of living.
And I think you do.
So we got the, we got the, whatever we're talking about, the other department heads, what they get for an average, a raise, but then there's also how are we going to get the equity back to where the equity should be?
And I think that we do ourselves a disservice for the community by thinking that we only want someone who is older and retiring. We want people that can run, this town is a business now. We, we don't want somebody who's, you know, got another five years to work or something. I think we'd like to have a first select person who has the intention of not just staying two years.
Yeah, but the problem with that is.
The first is just two years.
Yeah, I mean, it could be two years, and then you're, you know, if you've left your job, you're stuck unless you're, you know, self-employed. So it's somebody who's self-employed or, you know, retired, who is going to really, or, you know, doesn't, doesn't work, you know, maybe volunteers or does something else, that's going to go for this job, because there's, there's not the job security that you have in other jobs, you know? So I mean, that, that sounds like a, you know, something encouraging to say, yeah, you want somebody who's young, who's going to do it, but, you know, people need to, you know, support families and pay mortgages, and if you don't think after two years you're going to be reappointed, reelected, excuse me, then, you know, it, it's too much of a risk.
Exactly, my point. We can't run a town on a different person every two years. There's no continuity. And especially of somebody who hasn't lived in the town for very long, who has no background knowledge. I, I just think we're limiting ourselves for what's going on in this town, the burden that the first selectman has. You know, our mileage is still the same, it's 20, 42 points of square miles, but the population is far different in what's expected of the first, first select person. Well, I was the one that put it on the table, I'm willing to hear anything, but I feel that I, the 102,000, I think, is compared to other positions of town, I think, limits us to possibilities.
Oh, maybe it comes down to, you know, if we're looking back at the charter, you know, maybe you, you change a position of the first selectman, so it's, you know, it's a longer term, because two years is just, it's, it's too much risk for anybody, you know?
Last, last two charter revisions, we charterized it for four years, it doesn't care.
And we had that as a question on the past two charter revision commissions, and the four-year term did not pass.
Right.
Did that go to like referendum, or?
Charter revision has to go to referendum.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yep, it did not pass.
Yeah.
So let's just get off the log, and somebody put a proposal on the table. I'm going to recommend a $3,000 pay raise for this current, this upcoming budget year, one year.
I hear a motion on the, on the floor, do I hear a second for Ms.?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second, and any further discussion?
Now, 3%, I mean, $3,000 is about a 3% raise, which is, is, doesn't get us back to the equity, but it does at least give up the cost of living for this year to next year. So, yeah, with the 7% inflation, 8% inflation, it doesn't even keep up with inflation, but.
Right, it doesn't really elevate it.
But it's a start.
Yes.
It's a, it's a start.
Okay. So we got a motion and a second?
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay, I'm just giving you a chance to talk.
Old habits die fast.
Dan, do you have any thoughts about it?
No, I, I, I mean, I think it's appropriate to, I think the current figure is a little bit low, and for him to be able to attract people, it's got, it's got to move up. 3,000, like you say, that's a start, and moving in the right direction, I'd support it.
Okay, and perhaps in further, in future budgets, this process that we're undertaking right now can happen at an earlier stage, with fuller information discussion, maybe there will be a charter revision situation happening at that point, but if not, I mean, to me, it's, it's complicated, because you have an elected position, as opposed to an appointed one, or, or an employment situation, so to speak, and, and we have, and the duties are, as we all know, very significant, it's kind of around the clock, and we have an inflationary situation on top of it. So we've got a confluence of, of difficult issues, and then we had the, the salary, as you pointed out, giving us that list last time, Roseanne, that, that we had a sort of, we had a decrease at one point because of our first selectman not, cutting his salary. So I think this does move us in a, in a good direction, but I'd like to see this conversation happen earlier.
Well, I think if you go ahead with the charter revision commission, it's going to happen, and we better hope we don't get a, a town manager, because you're not going to get a town manager for $3,000.
Absolutely not, you, not even coming close, I think.
Yeah, I don't think so.
It's a completely different arrangement and, and set of skills and responsibilities and expect, expectations, so, right? But, you know, with a two-year term, you know, two-year term, elected position, having had the cot, plus the inflation, we, you know, and first selectman that is, you know, expressed, obviously by putting forth this budget, not expressed an interest in having a, a raise in his salary, so we have all of this to deal with.
Well, I think that perhaps we could set it up so that the first, the first select person's salary would be adjusted in non-election years. Which takes the election issue out of the picture.
Well, that would take next year.
Which would be this year.
Uh, well.
It's next year, it's before the elections, so you'd consider this year the non-election year.
Right, this is the non-election year, mhm.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And so this is a, sort of a one-time increase at this point, we're not suggesting any, you know, additional increases down the road, but just something to move the needle and to bring attention to it.
I think that's right.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion, second, and any further discussion points? Okay.
And this salary would be effective with the approval of the budget?
Yeah.
Correct.
Not until budget approval.
Yes, correct.
So the motion is to increase this line item?
Yes. Yes, line item 111 in Budget 101. From 102,250 to 105,250, correct?
Sounds right.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So I'll, I'll sort of recirculate the motion, so motion is amended, so someone make that motion, just to, just so we can have the numbers in there.
But Roseanne's already made the motion, and Dan's already seconded it.
All right.
So you're amending her motion.
No, no, I just was going to, I was, okay.
Clarifying.
It's fine, I was clarifying, okay. All right, any further comment? Okay. I'll take a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Five zero. Thank you. And then we'll take a moment. I'm going to, I'm going to call for a two-minute break, since I have the podium, since I have the, the ability to do so, just for just a moment, for, for, because, because I can, and we've been here for some time, so. Yep, I will do that, and I'll, I'll pause down here.
That was a long two minutes.
It's all right, we kind of needed something there.
I don't know, we've been here for, since six or so.
I'm hoping I grab the bottle.
No, that's what, there's a, you got to watch these, because somebody put the, the case upside down. Usually when you open up, they.
Right.
Yeah.
Roseanne? We're back.
You cannot go anywhere.
Now, do we have?
Okay, we're, we're on, if we're going to begin.
Anna, do we have the information for the motion to adopt the budget and everything?
We're going to do the Board of Ed budget separately, aren't we? Because we can't, we can't make any recommendation.
We can't reduce it at all, but we have that, that chart that we moved, the general government, the, the three items, as well as, and then the budget.
So, so you, you have made a total of $69,983 in reductions, which includes the $5,000 reduction that you made at your February 23 meeting to.
Register. Registered.
which includes the five thousand dollar reduction that you made at your February twenty-third meeting to, um, the registrar's budget. So, um-
Does this include any of the things that might be, that are being considered for the rescue funds? Should we wait until they give us their report?
Well, we have to adopt the budget, we have to adopt the, the budget has to be delivered to the Board of Finance next Wednesday.
Well-
So what, this is only third, this is only Wednesday?
Well, we can't, Wednesday, but.
If so, what, if I, if I may, um, so the one, the one item that I've seen that's, that is up for consideration by the committee is the purchase of the trash truck for public work. So, once the report is, you know, once the committee makes the recommendation, the Board of Finance would have time to incorporate that reduction into the budget before it moves on. So, I mean, I think that's kind of how I would envision it working at this point.
Yeah, I, I think that's correct, I, you know, I think the report, our report should be presented to this board, um, on the sixteenth of March, as planned.
Right, which will give us time to, and, and any corrections can be made to the Board of Finance at that time. Because right now, you know, if, uh, if we don't adopt tonight, you, we have time to make, could make our books, make the books available for the Board of Finance for next Wednesday, to deliver to them.
So we really need to adopt it.
And then, and then the Board of Finance also has two sitting members on the committee as well. So they'll be, you know, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna know that there's that, that particular item that can be reduced from the proposed budget.
So they'll have that feedback so that they, they'll know, and then they, they can adjust it accordingly from where we bring it off to them. I think that'll work.
So what's, uh-
Should we have the final?
Yeah, so the, uh, the town, uh, general government budget now would be?
So, um, with the sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars in reductions, um, the general government is twenty thousand three hun-
You mean twenty?
Twenty million, I'm sorry.
No, you, go ahead.
Twenty, no, no, no.
You're trying to make twenty thousand work.
Oh, boy.
Twenty million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Debt service, five million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Capital, seven hundred thousand, six hundred and sixty-six do- sixty dollars. And Board of Education, fifty-four million, six hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. For a total of eighty-one million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
I think that in the past, we have voted separately on the Board of Education.
No, it's, it's, no, we vote on the entire town budget and we-
Okay, yes.
Yeah, no, we have, I mean, we incorporate, even though we don't have any ability to reduce it, we have to pass the entire budget for both the town and Board of Ed onto the Board of Finance.
How much is the total savings?
Yeah, what was the savings total, Anna?
Oh, hold on a second. Sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three.
I didn't feel like it was seventy-eight thousand just for the police officer.
I don't think we-
You, you didn't make any reduction for the police?
We haven't discussed, I don't believe we've actually made a decision on, on Department two sixteen yet. Or two fifteen, the dispatch.
Did you add, uh, the money ba- is the money been added back into here for the dispatcher?
No.
Okay.
Is that on the list as a potential for rescue funds?
No.
No.
No, it wouldn't be.
So with some of these additional, uh, positions, do we wanna kind of go through those? Because those seem to be the ones that were, you know, they're either gonna be yea, nay, or, or, you know, or half or whatever, so.
Okay.
Would that be okay?
Okay, dispatch right now is, uh, four hundred and sixty-nine, uh, six hundred and fifty-four, but that's only for one point five dispatchers. If we, uh, added, uh, uh, brought that up to two dispatchers, so we'd have twenty-four hour coverage seven days a week with two dispatchers, that would need to be brought up, Anna. And I think the, uh, the number would be twenty, an addition of twenty-eight thousand, seven dollars, correct?
Yeah, yes.
So we'd have to-
Yeah, I, I, I support that.
Then we're gonna challenge the chief to find an offset within his other budget for that amount.
Uh, but this is, I think, I-
No, this is just, this is a cer- this is just a dispatch budget. We'd have to, we, it wouldn't come from within this budget, it would have to come from-
His budget.
Some other budget.
Police department.
'Cause we still have to increase that line item.
Okay.
I would still be a proponent of doing one dispatch in July and one in January, but.
So that, that line item would come to, I have it at four ninety-seven, six six one, if we add the, bring that other dispatcher in.
So, so for me, this was a, you know, of all the various positions that can be, that seem to be, need to be added, this to me was top priority. I feel like I've, um, you know, for the last number of years, um, you know, been hearing about the need to have the two dispatchers on in the, in the evening shift, the eleven to seven shift. And, um, I just think it's critical, it's a, it's a, it's a public safety need that's been articulated that really seems to, seems to need to be addressed. And, um, I think the case has been well made for it repeatedly. And I, I think, uh, last meeting, I, you know, I, I'm not in favor of sort of the half start with this because I think you need to, to meet the need that has been expressed, which is to have two people on, on that shift. Um, and so I, I'm in favor of the two starting at the same time.
And the other comment? Okay, I, 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 I'm in favor of that too, having, like I said, I've worked in the environment where sometimes two isn't enough. I mean, midnight shift is usually, uh, to the most part quieter, but, you know, as, as I think we pointed out, what happens if the one dispatcher gets ill or something happens in there? So I, I'm comfortable adding that back into the budget. Anna, that would also make a change in the, uh, benefit line as well, too, because you'd be giving benefits to that individ- uh, to an extent. Or were they already figured into there? Because we would've been talking about bringing the person halfway on through, halfway through the year.
You know, I, I think at this point, we'll, we can manage.
Okay, okay, so.
So you're looking for a motion now?
A motion to, uh, under, uh, Department two one five dispatch, under one hundred Personnel Services, line item two one two dispatchers, increase the, uh, number from four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-four to four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars, is what it would be. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll move.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Correct.
Okay, uh, no abstention, so it passes five one. And that will, uh, we have to figure out how that will change the, the bottom line on Personnel.
Does six two three 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 become six five one three four zero?
And what does six ten eight, eight three three become? I don't think we have to actually make a motion there, 'cause just that motion by itself increases that.
Yeah, I think Anna can.
Right, yeah, you're good.
Yeah, we're good doing that, so.
You're making more work for yourself.
Yeah, I've got to, right now.
We can move.
Okay.
Let Excel do it.
I guess that brings us to police.
Yeah, police. And, um, you know, we had, we have discussed, you know, possibly, uh, reducing the, uh, from, uh, two to one and a half. Uh, the chief has not gotten to me on the overtime, uh, 'cause he said that's a hard one to figure because he wouldn't want to reduce, 'cause you can see it's pretty much always been right at about that level.
But again, if you're edging a person, the overtimes should go down.
Mhm.
It's-
We can cut that, there's not, there's nothing that says we cannot reduce that, it's just that he might ha- and that's what he said. He said, we could reduce it, but they may have to come back to us and ask for some money at some point in time.
Okay.
So.
What some of the challenge can be is when somebody is out and they have to replace, we, they have to replace a shift. Like, for example, right now, we have one of the sergeants out for an extended period. So it's, it becomes pricey to, you know, keep doing, you know, having another sergeant come on, in to fill the shifts that sergeant that is out, you know, so.
I just, the way I look at it, I got this extra forty hours every week floating around. And I understand there's other things that the chief wants to do with that person, but if somebody is out on sick, then that person fills that slot.
Well, I think, but he also pointed out, too, that it gives you the overlap, but here, if it's on a, that person's off day, you don't say, well, instead of working Tuesday, you can work Thursday this week, you can't do that. Contract does not allow you to do that, you can't move the person around with their, with their days on and off to, to avoid overtime. If you have, uh, it, on the overlap day, it would, uh, as you pointed out, he, I think he, what he said, he, he was very well about how he explained how many more, uh, shifts he would get per year out of that individual.
And that's why it doesn't reflect, well, in the overtime number, because you're actually increasing the service to the town by having, uh, more manpower on a shift than you would've otherwise. So you're not off, it, it isn't as though you're offsetting a, uh, some of the shift and, and reducing the overtime. It's additional services being provided.
And what I'm saying is that the day that somebody's out sick, that service goes back to where it is today. And that person's out for sick for three days, so whatever that added service is for those couple of days, you don't have that added service.
Well, yes, you might, because if it's a day, here again, there's still gonna be those uncovered shifts.
Yep.
And you can't, and if that's the three days that a person's out, you can't take somebody and say, okay, we're shifting you, you're not allowed to do that.
I understand that, but I'm saying if a person works two thousand hours a year, right, fifty-two times eight, fifty-two times forty, two thousand hours, uh, uh, two thousand hours a year, some of that's gonna be used to cover some of this overtime. I don't know how much, but.
Well, I think that we're working to try to get additional coverage in the police department. So if we give the, the new position, we have the new position, but then we reduce the overtime, then we're, we're not getting that much further ahead.
But the overtime is a time and a half, the straight time, straight time? So this is budgeted at time and a half rates, not a straight time.
The, the overtime is, yes.
So that's what I'm saying, there should be some number in there that can be decreased. And if it's ten percent, then ten percent is that twenty-eight thousand that we're trying to find?
So were you, you'd-
So you're saying you wanna reduce the overtime by twenty-eight thousand then?
What I'm saying, yes, what I would propose, and this is discussion before motion, but I would propose that we decrease that overtime by the twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred that we added to the, um, dispatch.
Twenty thousand, seven.
Twenty thousand, seven. I got it written down right here and I can't remember.
No, that's okay, we've been here a long time, Bill.
So then we, we, we reduce that thirty-three thousand by twenty-eight thousand, and if late in the year, he says, you know what, I can't do it, that's where the contingency comes in. So we've at least challenged him to try to do better.
Okay, you've actually, you know, I wanna make sure this, I, I, I just wanna make sure we convey to him, and convey to the police department that we still wanna ensure that we're getting that extra coverage, 'cause, you know, as we've talked about, you know, we're seeing that uptick in crime and so forth. We're sa- I mean, fortunately, it's not, you know, it's not dramatic and, and not violent crimes, luckily, but we are seeing an uptick. So I just wanna be sure that they don't feel hampered like, well, you know, I'm, I, I've got an increase, I've got a spike, I wanna address it. So as long as we convey that, knowing that if it becomes necessary, that they can come back for revisit, I would be comfortable doing that.
Yeah, I'm hoping that the savings comes in straight time versus time and a half, not necessarily reduce services to the town.
Okay, I understand, I understand, so, okay, if you would like to make a motion, Bill?
Okay, I'm gonna do some math first, I'm gonna subtract those two numbers. So if I go three three zero, two thirty-nine minus two eight double oh seven, you get James Bond?
I, I was waiting for, as soon as you said double oh seven, I knew someone was gonna make a James Bond comparison.
Okay, I would like to make the motion to Public Safety Police Department, Department two sixteen, one hundred Personnel Services, line item five fourteen overtime, a motion to decrease three hundred and, three hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine by twenty-eight thousand, double oh seven to three oh two, two thirty-two, with the expectation that we get efficiency in straight time versus overtime.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been seconded by Anna, any further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, uh, motion fails on a three-three vote, so. It stays at three thirty, two thirty-nine. Okay, any other, uh, areas to look at?
We had the present, we had some additional information about Niantic Fire Department from, um, Chief Barone this evening about the position requested, which sounds like it's down to one posi- it was print, down to one position.
One position, yes.
We're all feeling about that.
I would, uh- Here again, this is one where I, I think you see maybe what you said, Bill, about a little efficiency, maybe we could take a look at, uh, overtime in this case. I wouldn't mind taking a look at that, 'cause if you do have that additional person, that's where you have, uh, yeah, an ability to offset some, some, uh-
If this isn't, if this is not contractual overtime?
No, it's not, uh, right now, and I don't wanna get into contract negotiations, we'll talk about that once I've had a chance to meet, uh, with the labor attorney, then we can do an executive session on that. But, uh, yeah, I, I would think we could probably make a little bit of an adjustment in that, 'cause we've added thirty, uh, eight thousand, this is a little bigger here, 'cause we did have a couple, uh, you know, not work-related, but we had some, uh, people out, you know, uh, out with, with, uh, some illnesses that required them to be out for a little bit, um.
So for clarity, that, that account, six fourteen overtime in Niantic Fire Department, that, that covers unexpected, um, overtime, but what about the expected contractual overtime? I mean, it seemed to me, I, I thought it was one of the hot-
Right, right now, it's five, right now, it's, they have five firefighters on there, so it's five hours of overtime, uh, per week, per firefighter. And here again, we're entering into contract negotiations. And that was done, the, uh, the five hours of overtime was done at a time when we did not have an overnight firefighter. So the interest was to have the, uh, it was just a day shift. A day shift come in, so I think it, early, so that when the calls started coming in, you'd have an ambulance crew, and they would work a little later at night as well. Now we have a midnight thing, so we don't really need that morning coverage, it's already built in. And we have, uh, part-timers manning the fire stations until the midnight guy comes in. So that's something that we can look at in a contract negotiation as well. So I would feel comfortable reducing that by, you know, uh, if you wanted to look at bringing that down to say, I don't know, like a, like a, about twenty-two thousand or something like that. Here again, they could overrun it like they did- that. Here again, they could overrun it like they did this year, and we have to come back. Or maybe even, you know, so I would consider lowering that number a little bit. So, that's a, you know, forty-seven percent is a big increase, especially if you're gonna, looking for an additional firefighter.
So, you think twenty-two thousand would be a realistic number?
Yeah. I would think, you know, if you want to make a nice even twenty-two thousand and twenty-two dollars.
That's what I wrote down.
Yeah. Right, twenty-two, twenty-two. So...
So, drop it to one forty?
Yes.
That's six fourteen here, line six.
Yes, line six fourteen.
You got another question before we leave this budget?
Sure.
Does Tracy Human Resources do the advertising for hiring? Does each advertise, if there's a position open, does Human Resources normally try to find that person?
It'll, we, we, yes, we're getting to the point now where if there's a, an opening for hire, it'll be posted by the town.
Okay.
And, and here again, she has, first of all, there's a requirement to do some internal posting, which in this case, there's very few firefighters working for us that are qualified. So...
But back on the drum, there's been about volunteers and trying to get somebody to try to encourage more young people to come and, you know, ride a fire truck. Is maybe, does Tracy maybe have some?
No, because she, she, she works for employees, people who are going to be employed by the town, not, not volunteer for the town.
So, they maybe put an extra money in this budget for advertising this or anything to do?
Well, I think they said, like, the training fire prevention, I think the thing would be is, you know, rather than us give them the money, and for us to, you know, I, I think that's, and one of the things I've talked with the chiefs about, and I've got to read out to Dave Bear of the ambulance, is have a sit-down with the paid staff, the volunteer chiefs, the ambulance, and figure out how do we make this work better. I mean, right now, I don't hear complaints about people dialing nine-one-one for an ambulance and that. But, you know, you don't hear about that until there's a problem. And so, and I think that's something that I've found out over the last couple of months, talking with the fires. I said I talked to the firefighters. I've talked with the chiefs. I need to meet with Dave Bear from the, I'm going to sit down and come up with a discussion. How do we make all this work better?
Can we create some kind of incentive program that if they bring in a volunteer, they can get a something?
I, I think that's one of the things that, you know, and they're the ones that would have those answers. So, I, you know, in fact, I, when I met with the firefighters there, I said, "Well, I was going to try and set up something within the next couple of weeks." And when Chief Barone walked into my office after, during the, when I was back there, when you were discussing my situation, that's one of the things we talked about. You have everybody at the table. It does help out.
All right. Send me to make a motion to Public Safety Niantic Fire Department, Department two hundred and seventeen Personnel Services, Section one hundred, line item six fourteen overtime, to reduce the existing one sixty-two, zero, two, two, to one thousand, one hundred and forty thousand even?
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion? Okay. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. We're all set there.
Just a thought.
Sure.
You know, we were talking about pathways before in the, in the school budget. Is there any avenue there to, to create interest in the volunteer fire department? I mean, if you're talking about alternative things that young people can do, I don't know if that's something that could be an element of what they do in that program.
There's also that close connections, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Any of the groups that the kids are on the college track.
Yeah, they want to do something different. And, maybe that's a thought too. Maybe that's another avenue.
Is it a paid firefighter, or is it career?
A great career.
Yeah, great career.
Yeah. And here again, this is one of the discussions. Most departments nowadays are going on to the twenty-four on, forty-eight off. I mean, some of the larger ones, New York City, that do twenty-four on, seventy-two up, because those twenty-four hours are extremely busy. And, you know, that's a discussion that the paid firefighters have brought up. But if we wanted to do, it would require hiring a few more positions to be able to man twenty-four on, because you'd need two people per department, well, four people per, you know, each day. So, four times three is twelve. And then, you know, we have to talk about ways of integrating the voluntary, the part timers in there as well. So, that's a discussion we're going to have to have as we move forward this contract. So...
Because that sounds like you'd hire two more full-time workers.
Well, it, it would, because you have to have twelve. But here again, and that's where you have to sit down. There's a, there's a way to figure it out, because you're, you know, whether or not you're working overtime, that's based on the monthly schedule, not by, there's ways that, you know, and when, I've looked into it and so, and there's a lot of moving parts in that, but I, I can see where, you know, as time goes on, it would be advantageous to the town as well. But we're not there yet.
Sure.
That's like I said, I have to, you have to sit down with all the players and have everybody that has a stake to get ownership by everybody in this, to see how we can move forward. And I think then you, Mark Salerno, and I did that a little bit, and now, you know, standing here now, talking with the paid guy, fire professionals and that. And the nice theme is they all want to make it better. It's not as if it's us against them and that. They all want to know, they all know they have to work together to make everything better. So, I think that we have that opportunity. Any other discussion? I know under services to community, we had talked about possibly making some adjustments there, because some of those agencies have requested funding through the American Rescue Plan.
What number?
Oh, one fifteen, I'm sorry.
That's the number.
That's right. I forgot about that.
But until they get the approval, nothing, anything doesn't make a difference.
No, yeah. But the ones that could possibly be relooked at for, you know, a small amount of savings would, would be as we move forward. I don't believe beautification or, but I think TVCCA, the Vets Council, Safe Futures, the Historical Society, Main Street, and the Brian Dagle Foundation are the ones that have requested, correct, Ann?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, those are something that Board of Finance could come back and look at once things are moved forward and ultimately approved or whatever at Selectman Finance at that town meeting.
Yeah. And the, and alternate view of it all is that this services to community department, if you will, or this, this part of the budget is kind of separate and unto itself and something we do yearly as a town, because this is what we wanted to do, independent of any federal money that's brought in, et cetera, et cetera. So, when I first looked at this, that's, that was my thinking. I kept ARP separate and this list separate. But I can see both arguments, that you could say, "Well, reduce it, because they might be ARP recipients." But I can still see it as this, no matter what happens on the federal level or whatever decisions are made, these are commitments that the town has felt it wants to make. So, I kind of had these two worlds going on in my head.
Well, it would just be that one-year, one-year impact too. Next year, but, you know, next year, the hope is we wouldn't have the other challenges we're looking to fill, fills this year.
Right. But just, yeah, there's a couple of ways of looking at it.
So...
Well, I would see the rescue funds as a way to supplement what we do, because many, most of these accounts are paltry.
Yeah. I mean, you're talking...
And not taking money away from what we have.
Yeah, it's not much money. I mean, if we...
You're talking about a twenty-six thousand dollar budget that we might cut a bit of it out or something.
Yeah, sure. But that's something we had discussed. So, but, but again, so...
So, so the ARP funding is going to come to us March seventeenth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, and then it should be ready to go to...
Well, you know, we, we would probably vote on it at our first meeting in April, because first, because Board of Finance doesn't really meet, well, they, they'll have their special meetings for the budget review, I think, coming up at the end of, as a month progresses. But normally, we try to do anything that needs to go to Board of Finance and then a town meeting at the first meeting of the month, because then it allows us to vote on it, then go to the Board of Finance, and then at our second meeting, vote on it. Because if we voted on it two weeks from tonight, it would be, we just got it, so we might want a chance to absorb it and digest it a little bit before...
I'm just trying to see that where the ARP is finalized and where the town budget's ready to go forward.
We'll, we'll have time, because what, the, the goal would be to vote on this at the second meeting in April, on, on the ARP money, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Because, and you will need the time. I mean, Ann and I are now familiar with all the various requests and going through the process of evaluation, but it is, you know, I mean, there's a lot of information to, to digest.
So, basically, on the twenty, the second, which would be the twentieth of April, and they've got, that might be after they had, what's the, do you have the dates for the Board of Finance meetings?
Um, I, you know what? I don't, I don't have...
So, it's the weekend for us, right?
I thought it was March twenty-second that the Board of Ed was presenting.
Yeah. And I think they're planning on adopting their budget around the fourth. So, we could, obviously, we could look at possibly moving that up a little bit, because we'd want that to know exactly what was in there ahead of time.
Yes.
And I think also that the way the ARP money is, I mean, we pretty much, it's going to be pretty much synthesized, you know, the summary, so you'll be able to look at it pretty quickly. I don't think it should take that long, because, I mean, I think we've gone through and the people on the committee, we should be able to present.
Yeah. And, and I've seen it, and I, it's obvious, you've done a lot of really good work on that. I mean, no, it's impressive for, for the whole committee. And I think what we could probably do then is probably try to move it so between your meeting this week, where you're pretty much ready to move, and coming to the Board of Selectmen, we can easily get it vetted through, whatever you were going to move forward. We can get Town Attorney to sign off on it. So, we could possibly easily do that at the meeting. Looking at the adoption schedule, that'd probably be good. Try and adopt it on the sixteenth at a Board of Finance meeting, which would be coming up, one of their special meetings, just amend that to add the ARP appropriation. And then, we could, we probably have to schedule a special town meeting. If, once Board of Finance says it, we can schedule that anytime. So, we can try and do that before they adopt the town budget, because we want to know.
Yes.
So, I'd like to see them both laid flat, so that we know that we're going to get the ARP finalized before the budget's finalized.
Okay, we will. Because if, if we act on, if we voted on the sixteenth, the Board of Finance could vote on that ARP at their next meeting after that, whenever that would be. We can find out what that would be. No, yeah, for the special meetings, just amend the agenda for that, even though it's a special meeting, as long as we amend it. And then we have to give at least a few days before we, there's a timeframe for a town meeting. But we can do this. It should be by, by the thirtieth of the month, which is before they're going to adopt their budget.
Yeah, I think that will work.
I think it's, yeah, it's doable.
Yeah, it'll work. It's doable.
Okay.
Okay. Any other adjustments? Because we have to, you know, come up with an adopted...
How about IT? I mean, just thinking of those bigger, you know, positions and so forth. IT was, let's see.
One oh nine.
One oh nine, thank you. Okay.
We already did the, the one adjustment to that, reducing the...
Yes. But in terms of the director position, I guess that's, that was a...
That's, yeah, obviously, a, a big number. It's to the point where we can't expect the chief and Joe Burgot to be trying to do IT. They just can't give it the time or, or effort that is required.
Well, it doesn't do any good to have all the equipment and then not have people be able to use it or know how to use it.
I mean, we had talked about it at our last budget hearing meeting, but it, it's not like we concluded, you know, made a conclusion about, about that particular position. I mean, that's kind of the guts of the, of the changes, I guess.
And here again, you know, by putting this in, as we, on that last page of the, you know, it does indicate that, you know, we have cut down the...
Yes, the STAR computer.
STAR computer.
Right, right. Some of that is...
Amount, yes. STAR computer has been reduced from, this year, it's one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. Next year, it's projected to be seventy-one thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. So, you know, the, so that even if we moved that out and had STAR do what they're doing now and did not do the director, we'd have to add some, we can't, we can't cut back what we already have. So, that would be the question. Do we maintain STAR or...
Can I ask that question specifically about STAR? And they said that it was definitely needed, that it is used frequently.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we, oh, no. We, if we got rid of STAR totally and did not have a director, our IT, we would not be able to function. It's just not possible.
It's not feasible.
Yeah.
And I, I'm sure Joe Burgon, Chief Finkels, I know more about IT than they ever thought they would, but they're not in a position to, yeah, to do that.
It's just a different skill side.
And here again, we have a, a new facility, we have, you know, IT is just moving forward so fast. We're getting more and more concerned, obviously, about cybersecurity in lieu of what we've seen internationally over the last several, last week or so. So...
You got body cam cameras now that rely on that technology?
Yeah. I mean, that goes up to, yeah, there's, there's a lot of...
There's so much going on.
A lot of moving parts to that. That's where...
You need it.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can't, I don't think we can continue with the, with the piecemeal approach.
And here again, too...
Calling from our existing department heads.
And here again, I just look at what we're doing with the overtime attendance system that we've just adopted, which will tie into the units. Karen is in the process of digitizing in there. We're waiting to hear back from a couple more people for planning zoning, for digitizing down there. All that's going to have to have somebody as a gatekeeper. And Carmen is a, is a coordinator. She's really not, she's not, you know, she, it's a position she, she could apply for, but that, you know, is someone, you know, she just basically maintains the day-to-day stuff. For instance, when, you know, I, I couldn't get onto my email the other day, and I had to have her tell me, "Try doing a restart," and it worked. Okay? Sometimes, you just got to keep it simple, but, you know, but you...
Unplug the machine.
Control, Alt, Delete, yeah. Or just actually go to the screen and hit restart. But, you know, you overthink it sometime.
Unplug the machine, as we do at work.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Unplug it and plug it back in.
It makes a difference.
It makes a difference. But here again, you know, but, you know, with the, you know, setting up the, this...
The town addresses.
The addresses and stuff like that.
Right.
But you have, some have director who's not doing that on a regular basis, still overlooking the whole system.
We've reached a level of, I mean, we need a level of sophistication that's equal to the infrastructure we've, we've started to put together in this town. And it's, it's time.
Well, you know, the thing is, we're reviewing the town, the secretarial, which is not, they don't even, they have administrative assistants and public works, because they're all in our up shoe. And there's still positions in that contract that don't exist anymore, receptions, all these other things that we've eliminated over time. And, you know, the, the challenge over, you know, it's like I said, over the last couple of days with Sandy out by, she had to be out for a couple of days. It really put a strain on her. There's just no one that could, and, you know, Bill, you said you can come in that, yeah, but you really can't get a volunteer to come in and do that. You have to have someone who's been having some cross-training and, that you can depend on, that you can say, "Okay, you're coming over here for a couple hours today, moving out of your office to here." Because there are quiet times during the course of a day sometimes where you can do that. So, any, any further discussion on IT one oh nine?
Okay.
Okay. Any other items to discuss?
You said when we talked about the pension committee, that the pension is funded over a hundred percent of that?
Yes.
Why?
Because of good investing and, you know, return on investment. You know what your obligations are, and because of what... and because of what we've been able to make as far as, you know, returns on investments, it's gone above that.
Okay, so is there an opportunity for us not to be putting as much into that account if it's already over a hundred percent?
Uh, no, because it's not, no.
And not implying that we don't want it to be a hundred percent. I understand it needs to be a sixty or seventy percent.
Yeah, I think we're in a really good spot now, and we do expect, I guess, Rob, Bobby Schultz, we expect a couple other retirements this year. It'd be hard to say, let's look at backing that off. I think.
Just when you said over a hundred percent, it's like, okay, we, you know, we're in a super strong position now. Do we want to turn the tap down a little bit?
I think that would be a recommendation by the Pension Committee, because these are the people who have that fiduciary background, and that's something we could ask them moving forward.
Well, if I might comment, so, so every year we do an actuarial evaluation on the plan, and it's, and there's always an annual required contribution calculation that is in in that document, and that's how we fund it. We funded it, we've made that annual required contribution over the years, and that, that's, you know, a contributing factor to why our plan is so well-funded. This past year, the Committee did have our actuary do what's called an experience study, and based on the experience study, we made some changes to how the actual value, you know, some of the components of the actual valuation, which in turn has made what towns' annual required contributions are decrease. So, you know, we've, they, you know, that's already started to move forward.
We are putting less.
The process already goes, and it's already turning the spigot down because we're over a hundred percent mark.
Well, it's, and it's based, like I said, on.
Yeah, yes.
On that valuation.
Yeah, that's not the only variable, you're a hundred percent, let's, yeah.
So, so, you know, I guess with that said, the town is looking, you know, through through our Pension Committee, Pension Board, you know, the town is looking at it responsibly and doing the right thing.
Yeah, and the thing is, Denise Hall, who's, you know, she's on the Pension Committee as well, she has pointed out, when she was in West Hartford, she was on their Pension Committee or the equivalent of it, and they were funded over a hundred percent and made some adjustments, that were flush with cash, and then they were something like sixty-five percent over a few-year period, so it it doesn't take long to have something, you know. And I know what, I know you're not suggesting that, though.
No, I'm not suggesting.
But we have made adjustments based with the new fiduciary that's that's representing us, that we have been able to realize the savings without affecting that.
Yeah, but watch what our friends in Washington have done to Social Security. I'm not implying that we do anything even close to that. I'm just suggesting that we just, if we have excess than we need, but it sounds like the process already has it under control, so.
Yeah, I think you want to, you want to make your annual contributions. I think that's looked at not well, you know, if you don't do that and can get you into these these difficult situations.
Okay, any other items on the budget that we would like to review before we pass a budget on, adopt a budget and pass it on to the Board of Finance for review?
So what do we do with the Board of Ed?
We pass.
Right now, we can only pass that, but we can make a list of recommendations and forward them to the.
What I would recommend, what I'd recommend doing, because, you know, if we wait really any longer, we'd have to meet Friday night because Monday doesn't give Ann enough time to get, if we adopt then, to get everything done and pass it on. What I recommend is if you have questions, because, like I said, Sandy, what time do these get delivered today? We just got the budget books.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock, sometime this afternoon, so, you know, obviously not much time to go through it, so I would recommend any questions, you know, send them to Jeff, as he said, but anything that you see that is a concern or a question, I'm sure we could attach, get the question to Sandy somehow, and then we can attach, or recommendations, is probably a better word, because hopefully our questions will be answered, recommendations, get them to Sandy, and then we can include them as an addendum to our budget next Wednesday. You know, these were the Board of Selectmen's individual recommendations, and we can list everybody's recommendation in that. I think that would be the best thing, because here again, we, that's not something we need to have a motion on. You know, our recommend, you know, a recommendation, that can come from an individual. We don't need to sit down and, you know, all those in favor of this recommendation, that's an individual type thing.
So I say, we either, we either accept this budget, move it forward, or we don't. Right? I mean, the Board of Ed budget.
Yeah, no, we have, we we have to move it forward. We can't reject it. We don't have that ability. We have to, we have to, we, we accept ours, we approve ours, but we basically, in the motion, we include it.
Per the charter.
What?
Per the charter.
Per the charter.
The Selectmen forwards the Board of Ed's budget on to the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance is where the reductions can be made.
With comments and recommendations.
Yeah, with comments.
I think we are a board, and I think that a comment should be reflective of the board, that there should be board discussion. I mean, we're entitled to our opinions, but we're bored.
Okay, but right now it'd be hard to come up with a thorough, we're just getting the budget to do it.
Well, I think that's a problem.
I agree.
Let's not have it happen next year.
We tried not to have it happen this year, but, you know, unfortunately, we can't, yeah, so.
Yeah, this this process usually happens a month earlier.
I know, it usually does, the Board of.
This is what it is, you know. So to to Roseanne's point, so how how could we, I mean, we could, we need some ti, each of us need some time to digest this, their budget.
But the only thing we can do is approve it.
With comment.
With recommendations.
With comments and recommendations.
Don't necessarily have to go at the same time as the approval, right?
Correct.
No.
So we could approve it tonight and comment it next week.
That's right.
Right?
And then have the comments come from the board.
Right, from the board. We could do that.
Yeah, I mean, as opposed to having six or seven separate documents going to the Board of Finance, and they go, I don't know what the hell to shit. Why deliberate next week and come up with a?
Some recommendations.
Recommendations from the board.
When do they present to the Board of Finance?
Not till.
March twenty-first, I believe.
Well.
Yeah, we don't meet next week.
No, we don't meet for the next two weeks. No, wait a minute, we meet on the sixteenth, right. We would still be able to, you know, as much as I've enjoyed immensely having all these meetings, it'd be nice, and actually, to be honest, to really do a thorough job of reviewing this, even by Monday doesn't give us the chance, and the budget has to be submitted. We could always submit the comments, I think, as an addendum and and set aside an agenda item for our meeting in two weeks to to detail our concerns. And in the meantime, you know, forward any comments to Sandy so that we can have an idea of what we're doing.
So I think if we, if we fashion a motion to adopt the budget, we'll need to reference the fact that there is expected comments and recommendations as concerns the.
Yeah, I mean, you have to see comments regarding the Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen's comments regarding the Board of Ed's Education's budget request will be submitted, you know.
Separately.
Well, separately.
Well, other years have you had more time to review, and then you've given the comments right to.
Yeah, this, this is the latest we've ever, we've never had it presented the night we adopt our budget. We've usually had it a week or two in advance.
And I think the Board of Ed kind of, they they didn't move forward as in their normal process. There was some delay on their part.
So.
Just last quick question on Ann, but capital improvement plan, do you have a draft or is that forthcoming? Are we separately handling that?
Yeah, so we we have, again, we're waiting for some, you know, the outcome of the ARP Committee deliberations.
Okay, just to clarify.
Board of Finance will be able to make that a discussion.
We'll just be doing capital in this budget. I mean, but we can still have our our thoughts about that as well separately. Okay.
Okay, anymore, and I understand the frustration on the Board of Ed. I mean, and it's, and to, you know, I don't want to try and have this real quick to try and put an undue burden on Sandy and Karen, if she helps her put the budget books together for Board of Finance, trying to incorporate them next Tuesday. That just is a very, you know, it makes it very difficult on them. And the only media, we could, we still have time to schedule a special meeting for Friday night, but I'm really not in favor of that.
I don't think you'll get a majority vote on that.
I don't, yeah, I don't think I would.
Come on.
Stop it. Anyway, okay, so we now need to take a look again at the crafted motion to adopt the budget.
So with the the two additional changes that you've made, the total reductions are sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So the general government budget is twenty million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Debt service, capital and Board of Ed all remain the same. The total bottom line would be eighty-one million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
That's about three, what?
Eight, can you say that, eighty-three million?
Eighty-one million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Now, there used to be a specific face sheet we'd have to adopt the budget, specify what was, do we have that, Sandy? Please do, that would be great. Thank you.
Are we going to motion by each budget?
Well, we always do to adopt, we do, we, well, it's usually one motion till we say, I move to adopt, and she'll have it. The 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 Easton Town Budget, then the Board of Education, and then the total budget, and incorporate capital in there as well so that they know exactly what they have. While we're waiting for Sandy to do that, let's, unless there's, I'll really quickly, because I have a hunch no one wants to do ex officios tonight, but because we have Elizabeth here, I spoke with Amtrak today, and they are aware of our concern, and they want to work together for a resolution. It's always gone as far as the head of their corporate security, and it said that the installation of the fence won't happen without our input. So it was supposed to start last week, it didn't. It will not be starting until possibly the fall, but we will be included in any for for our input, so that was nice to hear.
Have you worked with them before?
Amtrak? Yeah, yes.
It sounds like lawyers speak, excuse me, lawyers, but it just seems like they're saying we'd like to listen to your input, and we will, something.
Actually, actually, it was fairly promising, though, but it said they wanted our input, and it has not hurt that Senator Blumenthal and Congresswoman Courtney have actively made their concerns known as well. We had a update today on COVID from the Ledge Light and Uncas, which covers the whole southern Connecticut Council of Government. They're going to start looking away from the positivity rate and looking at hospitalizations to determine courses of action. They're recommending back, going back to in-person meetings. They also point out if, you know, if we've moved masks in schools and are asking students to go, then we should be also being back to work doing. One of the things they highlighted is better planning for spikes. If you hear of something, you start planning early. You don't wait until, as they pointed out, that the test kits and masks came a little late last time, so they want to make sure that doesn't happen again. You may have read something about the Omicron B variant. They said they've known about this for a long time. They're not worried about it. There's, I think, ten to fifteen cases that have been in Connecticut over the last, for an extensive period, so that they're not too concerned with that, but they, you know, just, so, you know, just, basically, most other town halls with all the people on there are back to masks or it's up to, it's an individual choice if you're not vaccinated here. I've kept it, if you're vaccinated, you can take them off. If you're not, you can have them on, so. And you got the Amtrak fence and ECC, we already talked about that, so I'll limit it to that since Sandy's here with the information. Oh, she's still filling that out, too.
Do you want me to do my update on the ARP?
You could do that, yeah, our update of ARP, we're doing that, too, sure.
Yeah, so with American Rescue Plan ARP Subcommittee, you know, everything's progressing really well for us, I think, you know. We've, the town received thirty applications from a combination of small businesses and nonprofits, and the committees reviewed those and made some decisions about those. Eight of those did require a tad more information, so Sandy has reached out to them to fill in some gaps, and we'll look at them tomorrow night, actually, again, with any additional information that's come forth. Tomorrow night's meeting will focus on the town department requests, and, you know, we'll probably have one more meeting to kind of put it all together before presentation to Board of Selectmen. But, yeah, it's it's come together pretty well considering the the scope of the of the the work that we had to, had to, you know, get through.
I feel like this group is, works really well together. It's a really good group, and I feel like, you know, it's, everybody adds something, and I think it was a really good idea that we did this.
Yes.
No, this is, this is, yeah.
No, it really is, it just.
And that just, I mean, as we all know, someone's going to find fault with it, but, I mean, I I look at, I've looked at it, too, because I, you know, Sandy's been quite busy doing this, and, you know, and she's going to deserve a lot of credit, I mean, for all, contacting all the people as well, but, you know, it's really impressive to see the work you've done with the the lists and the documentation and that. It's really impressive.
Thank you. Yeah, it should, it should be helpful. That's the idea.
Really good contributions from everybody on the boards.
And I think that's all we did. We cast that net out, and if someone says, well, I didn't know, well, I didn't know what more we could have done to get it out there, so. Okay.
Ask a question, based on the total money that we had available and based on all the requests, do you have more requests than we had funding, and is there a piece put aside for maybe days in the future?
So probably yes to both of those questions. I don't have firm numbers at that, you know, obviously, at this point, but we're in the neighborhood. You know, I I think considering, you know, certain applications or town requests that may not quite fit or belong somewhere else, for example, a town request that could be funded in another manner, by another source of funding, I think we're in the neighborhood. So I I did, I did that just yesterday, just went through all that that calculus, if you will, and I'm pretty confident that we can, certainly can, you know, our community requests, I think we can meet them and meet the requirements for appropriate use, and I think on the town side, I think we can meet quite a few of the requests.
Yeah, not all of them.
Not every single one, and some are gargantuan because of the nature of the work, you know, infrastructure project. I'm pleased that it's 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 better than I thought it was going to be. I thought we were going to be very way off.
No, I, yeah.
Really looking forward to it.
And and too, the the group of people really seem, you know.
Yeah, we're very, we're all very different.
No, but it brings it to a moment.
But we have really, you know, seen eye to eye on a lot of issues, right.
Okay, so this is, this is a motion to approve the budget.
Okay, so move to approve the proposed twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three town budget in the amount of eighty-one million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars for a net increase of four point three zero percent, consisting of the following, and to forward to the Board of Finance for approval along with expected comments and recommendations on the Board of Education budget.
Perfect.
General government, twenty million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Debt service, five million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Capital, seven hundred thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Board of Education, fifty-four thousand, six hundred and eight thousand, sorry, I wish, I wish, fifty-four million, six hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
It's a move. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Any further comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and it carries unanimously. Okay, we have done our update. Is there any ex officio that need to desperately report? Okay, sorry, none for Selectmen's report. I gave that really quickly. Communications, public comment, anybody? Okay, none. Selectmen's response, there is none. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. And thank you so much for a long, long day.